Andrea Wish. Andrea Wishup Atlas Land Consulting, 14500 Parallel Road, Unit Bar, Baser, Kansas. What we're trying to do here is we have a client who currently owns two parcels there, one a smaller parcel and one a much larger parcel.
Miss Wishup, I'm gonna need you to speak directly into the microphone or phone because you're fading in and out.
My apologies. Our client owns two parcels here over on this property, one of them being a smaller residential lot and the other one being a much larger lot. And he currently has a barn to the south of his house there. And what he's wanting to do is cut off the land around that bar, even with his back, his east line there. And create, you know, create one lot where he has a barn and his house on it and the other lot he would like to sell. We're asking for three variances here. One of them is the location of that. The location of that accessory building that we're speaking of is located in front of the house and that's not something that's typically allowed. There is quite a bit of tree coverage there on that west line, so I'm not sure that that's even visible from the road right now. So we're asking for that variance. Again, this is an existing structure, so we're not moving anything or putting anything new in. It's already in front of the house. The other exception we're asking for variance, we're asking for is that barn is already over 1,000 square feet, which is what the maximum square footage on accessory building is. That building is 1,300 square feet. And they, the house as it sits now with the property that it sits on, has a shed on the property. So adding this parcel or adding this little bit of land with that accessory building onto it will give them two accessory buildings, which is not allowed. So we're asking for those three exceptions, our variances for the already existing building.
All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? I just have one. How many acres does the applicant have to work with?
The applicant has, I'm pulling that up right now, I apologize.
Is the total track 18.4 roughly acres?
I believe so, yes.
The existing home sits on how much?
The existing home. The existing home sits on 1.89 acres now. I'm sorry, I'm lying to you. It does not sit on 1.89 acres. I'm not sure exactly how much it sits on right this moment.
Yeah, but there's no way to work this out when you've got 18 acres to work without requesting a variance?
There, there is a way to work it out to where at least the, the size of the accessory building and the amount of accessory buildings, but the accessory building being in the front will still be a variance that we would be asking for. And expanding that lot to a larger five acre lot to fix those other ones will reduce the amount of land that he's able to sell. And all he really wants to do is sell the piece without the building.
So it'd reduce it by what, three acres roughly, a little over three acres?
Yes, it would.
But if he still have 15 acres to sell?
He would still have 15 acres to sell and we would still need a variance for the location of the larger building.
He'd need to locate, okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand if you're online or come forward if you're in the chambers. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Chairman James Malloy, planning and urban design. Again, we have three variances here, one for the location of an accessory structure, one for the amount of of accessory structures, and one for the total square footage of accessory structures in the R1 district to date. The staff has received no letters of support, no opposition, no notices of violation on the property. Staff's recommending denial of this variance, of this variance request, all three of them as essentially we're both creating variances that do not currently exist. And there's also opportunities to, you know, design without needing any variance. The applicants even submitted a version of this where they would not need a variance. To address the applicant's point, they would, they wouldn't need a variance if they were to change the zone of this R1 piece to Ag because Ag does not regulate the placement of these accessory buildings, the amount or total square footage. So there, there are a couple of design solutions to this. They could also absorb, they could also plat or plat the smaller piece into the larger piece entirely. And then, once they, you know, were to sell, divide it up later on and you know, address some issues through that process. But there's, there's ways to address this. We don't think a variance should have been the first path forward. But with that, staff recommends denial. We have conditions of approval if needed.
All right, thank you. So it can be worked out. It's just a personal preference.
Correct.
On the property owner. All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Mr. Schwartz?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering, is there a reason why he doesn't want to apply to changes zoning to Ag?
It wasn't necessarily that he didn't want to change the zoning to Ag. It was, again, just trying to reduce the amount that he is putting in his residential lot so that he can maximize itself.
All right, other questions? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Mr. Jones?
Motion to deny the three requested variances for Bozza Case number 2024-017. Because they've created their own need for a variance.
All right, thank you. Motion for denial of all three variances, one, two, and three of Bozza Case 2024-017 made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller, did you hear enough of the application to vote?
No, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny this appeal, subject for the reasons outlined in the staff report, passes. Seven in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you.
That takes us to, Mr. Chairman, that takes us to our next application, BOZA 2024-018. Molly Bahrain with Cultivate KC for property at 1710 North 47th Street. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application? Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Bahrain, are you in the audience? Okay, if you're in the audience when your name is called, please make your way to the microphone or raise your hand so we can call on you so we can move forward. Okay, go ahead, please. I got you queued up to speak. Give us your name and address and tell us about your, your request here tonight. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm Molly Bahrain. I'm the graduate support specialist at Cultivate Kansas City. And we have two other staff members here tonight with us as well as the farmer. I am here in support of our farmer. Her name is Tharia Maria. The name of her farm is Maria's Natural Farm. She is a graduate of the New Roots for Refugees program, which is now called New Roots. She's been farming since 2016 and she bought a home and a farm in Kansas City, Kansas in 2023. Her property is approximately 4.3 acres. She grows vegetables, flowers, blackberries, and herbs. So in the variance today, she has been approved through NRCS to receive a high tunnel through the Equip Grant. And so we're going through this process to get some permitting to get a high tunnel built. A hot tunnel is an unheated greenhouse. And I believe I attached some pictures in the location of where the high tunnel will be built on the property. The dimensions of the high tunnel is, is 30 feet by 72 feet. I think that's it. Is there any more information you would like?
Well, I guess the reason for the variance, I understand what you're trying to do, but you're also asking for a total of three accessory buildings. Why do you need three?
We're asking for the accessory building for the high tunnel. They already have accessory buildings already on the property.
Right, and therein lies the problem. You're asking for another one. So that's what I want to hear about is why you're, what's, what is going to be done with the other ones? Are you going to remove some of them or do you want it all?
So in response to some of those questions in, in the accessory buildings, if that was a request that one of them needs to be removed, that can be something that I can, we can consider with the farmers. The, one of these structures will be taken down to build the high tunnel. And I believe it's the detached garage. That's the 420 square foot structure. That one will be removed because that's one of the flattest parts on the property. So that's the perfect spot for the high tunnel. So that will be taken down.
And that appears to be the best of the three. In terms of condition and okay, so that's the one that you intend to remove to make room for the, the high tunnel?
Correct.
Okay, we'll go and we'll see if we have any other questions from members of the commission. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the public. Anyone want to speak to this case in favor and opposition? Please come forward. Yes, sir. Give us your name and address, please.
I'm James Gibson.
Go ahead and talk into the mic.
I'm James Gibson. I live at 1720 right next door.
Okay.
My question is where exactly they want to put this high tunnel? I'm the only resident because I own the property right adjacent. It's the same property size.
Okay.
I'm worried about home value.
Okay, so you want to know where it's gonna be? All right, we'll find out.
I wonder exactly where it was going to be.
It appears that it's going to be somewhere in the location of the current two car garage based on what I was told before.
Well, see, that's right up on my property, next to my property line.
That'd be next to your property line? Okay.
Yes. I don't really want that.
Okay, anything, go ahead.
I would just like some distance between because otherwise that blocks all air if it's running east, west, or is it running north, south? This hot tunnel.
Okay, so do you have a problem with the high tunnel or the location?
Location.
Location. Okay.
I'm not opposed to them having a high tunnel, but I'd really like to keep it 50 foot off the fence line.
Okay.
I mean, I, the, the tunnel itself is okay.
Okay, it's just the location.
It's just I want the location. I don't want all my air blocked off from the south breeze.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, they got another one coming up after a while.
Okay, well, let's see what we do with this one because what we do with this one will determine whether or not we need you back for that one. All right, thank you. Anyone else? I've got someone with Cultivate KC that wants to speak online. Go ahead, give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ami Freiberg. I work with Cultivate KC. I'm the Director of Strategy and Partnerships. And I just wanted to speak in support of this, of this variant, specifically addressing the, the value of the high tunnel to the grower. It allows for season extension, which makes an urban farm business that's operating on very low margins a lot more profitable by protecting from the, the elements, extending the season. So I, I think it's very reasonable for the neighbor to request a placement that, that doesn't block their airflow. And I'm sure Molly and the, and the farmer can, can work on that. But just wanted to speak to the value of this, this piece of infrastructure for urban farms and particularly for this farmer who's been, been a really successful farmer in our community to, to improve her business operations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter, give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Ben Carpenter. I'm Program Manager at Juniper Gardens Training Farm with the New Roots Program. At 100 Richmond Ave, KCK. I was going to echo Ami's benefits of high tunnels in terms of season production and, or season extension and the value of those to the farmer. And I also wanted to speak to the track record the farmer has as a business owner, a responsible participant in the urban ag community. And that this, yeah, I, I think she's someone who's very much willing to work with, with her neighbors and anyone concerned to get this done.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none. I want to go back to the applicant, Ms. Bahrain. As far as the location goes, is that the only place that it is able to go? Because it does look like it's going right up. First of all, you only have 167 feet of width. And it does appear that it's going right over next to the property line. Is there any way to move that or is it, what's the location based on?
Is there any way to move it farther in, in like in the middle? Is that what you're asking?
I guess farther away from the property line to address the neighbor's concern.
I definitely think we could move it farther in. 50 feet, I'm not sure. I would have to go out there and measure the space. And and assess that.
How big will that strip for be? 35 by 72?
30 feet wide, 72 feet long.
Okay. So it's going to run lengthwise across the property, not front to back. It's going to run from side to side?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, well, that takes care of the, at least the answer of the question. And we'll go ahead and get staff comments and we'll, we'll come back. So we'll go ahead and close the public portion. We'll go to staff and get their comment on this file.
Thank you, Chairman James Malloy, planning and urban design. Again, this is, we have a variance here for both amount of accessory structures and as well as total square footage of accessory structures. On the property, there are already three existing, pre-existing accessory structures, at least one of them constructed without a permit. But otherwise, we had one letter of support. I mean, sorry, one letter of opposition prior to this evening. There are, there have been two notices of violation on the property for roosters, which is something we would address during the special use permit. Staff's recommending denial of this variance as again, they already have several accessory structures. And there's other means of accomplishing, you know, what they're wanting to do here, you know, be it, you know, different design, different orientation, hooking a couple of them together, you know, and having one larger one. I mean, there, there's a couple of different options here. Staff does have conditions of approval if need be.
All right, questions for staff? I, I'll start. So if this is denied this evening, can they reapply with a different orientation, different size, so on and so forth? There's a waiting period?
Byron Toyota Planting Department, there's not a limitation as far as if they are denied, if they were to be denied and they reapplied with a different, as you said, size of the structure, could come back through this body here or, or some type of recommendation.
All right, thank you. Other questions for staff? Commissioner Ward?
If we, if we held it over 30 days, did you get something worked out?
I, I would think we could figure out a solution, you know, with a holdover as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
What you and Commissioner Ward just said is what my exact was, that it might be easier. And my thought is that this is, I think, a commendable project, but I'm concerned about the neighbor's opposition and, and that being worked out.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller, your hand went up and down. Is that, are we addressing your?
Yeah, I had the, the same thoughts as Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Jones.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? There are none. I will stand for a motion when ready. Mr. Jones?
Motion to hold over Bozza Case number 2024-018. I'm going to say for 30 days to work with staff and the opposing neighbor to come up with a different plan.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, motion made for a holdover for 30 days of Bozza Case 2024-018 by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second? Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over this appeal until the September 9th Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for the applicant to work with the staff on the configuration and accessory structures on the property passes. Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And that, since we're holding this one over, we will not be hearing the, the other case on planning permission, correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right, sir.
So then that is special use permit 2024-048. It will also be held over till September 9th.
All right, thank you, sir. We're going to hold this over till next month so that the staff, they can work, see if they can get a better configuration.
They'll, they send me a letter or something.
Yes, they will. And we won't be hearing the other case tonight, so you're free to go. All right, thank you. Unless you find this entertaining, you're welcome to stay.
Let y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Our last application on the agenda for Board of Zoning Appeals is BOZA 2024-019. Molly Bahrain with Cultivate KC for property at 9310 Everest Avenue. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Bahrain, you're up again.
All right, thank you so much for hearing my proposal again today. This is for Farmer Kasa. The name of his farm is Green Fresh Farm. He's located at 9310 Everett Avenue in Kansas City, Kansas. He as well is a graduate of the New Roots for Refugees program. His farm is approximately half an acre. He grows vegetables, flowers, fruits, herbs, and much more. For the variance tonight, he is requesting to build a high tunnel. He as well has been approved through the USDA NRCS Equip Grant to build a high tunnel as well as a chicken coop and chicken run. The dimensions of the high tunnel will be the same as the previous application. So it's 30 feet wide by 72 feet long. And, and then the chicken coop, including the run, will be six foot, sorry, 64 feet long. That will, that's the, including the run and the coop, 10 feet wide, six feet high, I believe. Yes, there's the map.
10 by 64?
So, yeah, so in this, this is
I'm sorry, can you back up? 10 by 64, six foot high, is that correct?
64 feet long, 10 foot wide, six foot high.
All right, thank you.
In this site map here, this was in the original application, but then when I sent back my comments, I updated the site map. And the reason why this is larger now is because he wants to extend the run. The coop size is not getting any larger. He just wanted to extend the run. And then I included a picture of what that structure will look like in my second round of comments. Do you all have a picture of that?
Yes, I believe we do. And he also has three structures on the building. I'm sorry, he has two now and he wants to add two more?
Yeah, he has a detached garage that's 990 square feet. To my knowledge, that's the only structure outside of the chicken coop.
So there's already a chicken coop there?
Correct.
So is he gonna, is he gonna remove that one in lieu of the new one?
No, he's planning on keeping that.
All right, so that would be four. If he's got two and he wants to add two.
I believe he just has the detached garage and then the chicken coop and then the high tunnels. So I believe that's three.
So there is no chicken coop there now?
There is a chicken coop now.
So there.
Sorry.
Okay, you're, you're saying one, you're, you're, you told me there wasn't a chicken coop, but now you're saying there is a chicken coop. Is there a chicken coop there now?
Yes, there is a chicken coop.
Wait a minute, no, that's one. Go with me. That's one. And there's a detached garage.
Yes.
That's two. And now they want to add another chicken coop and a high tunnel? No.
No, he doesn't want to add a second chicken coop.
So my original question, he's going to take the other one down?
No, he's going to keep it.
So where's this 10, where's this 10 by 64 one going?
That's the one that he has now.
You're extending the current one?
Right now, just 20.
And you're building onto it?
If I got, I would.
Okay.
There's four buildings shown on the plat map in our report. There's the three, there's the house and the two existing structures, and there's two new ones toward the back. There's the high tunnel and then there's a new one behind the high tunnel.
Kasa, do you want, are you on the line? Do you want to clarify that anymore?
Yes, please.
Hang on, I've got one. Is that Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, Beth, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So I have Kasa here.
And what are you clarifying?
Okay, yeah, my name is Kasa. And then, yes, right now my chicken coop is, right now is the, just one. If I got, if I got permission, our extension, but right now is it just 20 feet long and then say height and then nine wide.
Is that the new one or the existing one?
Existing one. And then, but if I got permission, I would, the same size, our extension.
So it's the same structure that he's extending, he's extending the existing structure?
So he's extending the existing structure?
Correct.
And the new size of the existing structure will be 10 by 64, six foot high?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so there will only be three when it's all said and done. So the, the diagram that's sent to us in our report is not correct.
This one, the correct one.
He's indicating the center square and that, that doesn't exist?
No, the, the, no, they're just, just, they already turned down.
Okay.
Just there, the concrete.
Okay, so it sounds like the structure, it sounds like the structure in the middle of the map has been removed. There's nothing there anymore.
Has what?
Has been removed. There's nothing there anymore, wherever that center square is. And if you look at the
We're not extending that one.
Yeah, that one, no.
Correct, that one's gone.
Okay. We're gonna, I think we've got all the clarification I think I can get from all of you. So I'm going to go ahead and close this and we'll go to staff, or excuse me, go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Go ahead, come up, sir.
My name's Salvatore Baudin. I own the property at 9301 Everett, which is across the street from his house. It's all just grass and, you know, yard. Only thing I'm concerned about is I, you know, I understand that this is supposed to be a cultural thing. So why would you need a 64 foot long building to raise chickens? And why would somebody need 64 chickens for their family? Are they intending to run this as a business? Sell the chickens, sell the eggs? Are they selling everything else on the property? Because it's residential, it is not business. I'm just trying to understand how this is working.
Okay, so your question is why is the size necessary and whether or not they're going to be selling these or is this going to be a business enterprise, correct?
Well, yeah, if it's a business, then it's, it's not even authorized to be.
But that's your question for me, right? All right, I'm gonna see if I can get you an answer, but that's what you want to find out.
That's what I want to know.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Okay, yeah, I just uh, I'm, I don't know, I, if he's had chickens up there already, it looks like he might have them in that little bitty thing. I don't know what's going on over there. My sister is the one that lives in the house. Uh, but uh I I own half of it and I have to take care of her because she's disabled. So I just want to know what's going on. Because we've got cats and dogs in the neighborhood. Uh, every time anybody hit puts chickens out there, how's that, how are they going to be secured in that structure? Is that guaranteed? The boxes aren't going to come in, the coyotes aren't going to come in? And everything else that's out there now, not going to come in.
Okay, we'll see if we can get you an answer.
Yeah.
And I've got Cultivate K C online. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Hi, this is Ami Freeberg again, Director of Strategy and Partnerships with Cultivate K C. Um, I just am echoing my comments from before um that that Casa is an excellent farmer who has graduated from the New Roots Program. And um uh these, the high tunnel structures and are are really important to farmers being able to to grow food, grow high quality food, especially in a changing climate. And um to really be able to uh extend their their production um on the season, so. Uh, I just am echoing support for Casa. He's been an excellent farmer. He's someone who's come back and been employed by the organization. Um, and we think that that he uh would would really benefit from these structures.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to go back to Ms. Bar- Bahrain. Can you just address whether or not this is going to be a business enterprise for the applicant or what's going to be done with the chicken and the eggs?
Yes, so Casa is a farmer. Um, it is part of his business. The name of his his farm is Green Fresh Farm. Um, he will be selling the eggs um from from those chickens. And then in the high tunnel, he'll be growing vegetables. So it is a business, yes.
And will those, will those items be sold at the property?
Not at the property. Um, Casa has three ways that he sells produce. He sells in farmers markets around Kansas City. He sells through the New Roots Program, our C S A, which is our community-supported agriculture program. And then he also sells wholesale, which then goes to grocers and restaurants. So he does not sell any food out of his house, uh through his property, no.
All right. And the other, only other question, and I know the previous application was for the same size of a high tunnel. Is that, is that a standard size? Why is a ten by sixty, I'm sorry, thirty by seventy two uh necessary? Is that?
Yes, uh excellent question. So both farmers have been approved through the N R C S equip grant. And that's what they fund um is a two thousand one hundred and sixty square foot high tunnel, which is a thirty by seventy two foot. So that's the standard size that we we put on urban farms through this program, through N R C S.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to to Mr. Malloy and get his comment.
Thank you, Chairman James Malloy, Planning and Urban Design. Again, we've, we have a couple of variances here for amount and total square footage of accessory structures. Um, again, they're wanting wanting to do this as part of an agricultural uh operation on the property. Um. Again, and I want to clarify a couple of differences between this property and the previous one. The previous one was about a four eight, was about four and a half acres. In this case, we're working with about uh two thirds of an acre, so much smaller footprint. Um. And with the drawing on screen, I also want to point out that this isn't, that isn't quite to scale. Um, for reference, the property itself's only sixty seven feet wide. This high tunnel's going to be seventy two feet wide. So at the at the property line, it would, at the front property line, it would be wider than the property line. So just kind of, just to kind of wrap your head around what the scale will be. Um, staff's recommending denial of this one again. Um, one, he's already constructed the coop, it looks like. Um, either the coop or the high tunnel, we couldn't tell which one, but it sounds like the coop. Um, again, there's other manners to, with how they want to go about this. And then, you know, this many structures on this small, so we'll have an impact on neighboring properties, we feel.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Jones?
So my question is, from your uh vantage point, are there um options to where we need to maybe do the same thing in terms of a, like we did with the last one, a holdover? Uh, so that they can uh come back with a better plan. And then it also seems like now it's it's commercial, but it's in residential, even though uh the petitioner is going to like sell the eggs, I heard from someplace else. It's still residential, but it's like a commercial operation is being run, even though the produce is being sold elsewhere. Did I get that right?
Basically, yes, it's going to be grown onsite and it will be sold at another location, farmers market, other places. It will not be sold from the structure.
And to answer the question about um if a holdover would be helpful, I mean, we may be able to get a better, a slightly better design out of this. But I think unlike the other property where we have four and a half acres to work with, we're working with two thirds of one acre here. Um, and these are going to be pretty large structures in comparison to the property. So, I mean, we could, I mean, we could hold it over and try to get a better design, but I still don't think that changes the fact that there's going to be indexed nearby property owners, you know, regardless of how we design it.
Understood, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, you already answered part of my questions, the size of the lot and uh the uh map didn't look like it was drawn to scale, but the the position of the building looked like it was right on the property line. Do you have a?
Um, the existing garage um or the driveway is, looks like it's very close to the property line. The other, the existing chicken coop looks like it's on that rear property line, which um rear and eastern property lines, which helps a little bit since it's laying it further away from the existing residence to the east. But, you know, even then, it's still going to be rather noticeable and, you know.
The the seventy foot long one looks like it's right on the property line. If it was, if it was first to scale, that would probably reach out almost to the center of the the lot.
It it would take up a significant portion of the rear yard, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Is it viable to make this significantly smaller and so to still be able to use the grant or connect it to the current garage? I know that you would still need a variance for the size, but that's just, it's huge, it's bigger than the house. Is it possible to make it half the size? Or even less than that?
I, that might be a better question for the applicant.
Are you wanting the applicant to answer that question, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes, sorry.
Let me get her back. Hey, Ms. Bahrain. Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, can you go ahead and rephrase your question or ask it again, please, to the applicant's representative?
Yeah, the size of the, the structure is massive. It's bigger than his house. Is it viable to be able to utilize that and create something that's significantly smaller than that? And that he could potentially attach to his garage?
I definitely think it's a possibility that we can reassess the size. Um. The reason why it's located where it's at on the map is because that's the most level uh spot on his property. And when you're building high tunnels, you need to have it as level as possible because of drainage issues. Um, so that location is really the ideal location to place the high tunnel. Um, but it is possible, perhaps we could change the confu- the the size of it. I don't think placing it near the garage is really a good option for the farmer. But of course, Casa is on the call. If he has a different idea, I would love to hear from him as well if he has anything to add. But that, that's just my personal thoughts.
Commissioner Jones?
Uh, my, my question comment is, what about, and this is is of the petitioner and his representative uh downsizing perhaps, because it sounds like the dilemma is what he's wanting to do on the scale he's wanting to do it is just simply incompatible with size of property.
Okay, I've got another one of the applicant's representatives that would like to talk. Mr. Carpenter, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Actually, I was, I'm just gonna let Casa speak.
Hello. Yeah, I'm Casa. And then my, like, you know, uh, right now I have uh fifty chicken. But uh right now that my chicken coop, the twenty in still so far and then that's okay too, but uh my is like, you know, for business, I want a bigger, that's why I I I apply the permit. And then the um high tonne that we need very much because the, we don't use any chemical, something like that. So like for cover like that. And if we don't use like um any cover, we don't use any pesticide. So is it everything ruined by pass like that? So in, we move the place to middle or the the property, something like that, we can figure out. Thank you.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. That's it.
Hand up. I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to add.
It's an accident.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Sorry, I have another question then. What's the legal amount of chickens that you're supposed to be able to have on your property?
Um, without a special use permit on an R one zone property, you're limited to six.
Is there already a special use permit in place or was that another application coming or something different?
There's not one currently. There at um on the planning commission agenda, we will hear one.
Okay, I thought that's the last. Okay, I was just checking. Thank you.
Other questions about this application?
I have one.
Commissioner Ward?
Communication with the neighbors. I mean, we're talking about, you know, putting all these structures on a residential yard, basically. I mean, I mean, then, I mean, obviously, he's got trees behind him, so there's nobody back there early to bother, I guess, but he does have neighbors on the side. Has there been any communication with neighbors and how do they feel?
Any neighbors feel? Um, so in terms of letters, um, letters of opposition or support, there was actually one letter of support from the property owner next door. Um, I guess she also belongs to Cultivate K C. I'm not a hundred percent sure what the relationship there is, but um, she said she, you know, she said she likes it. Um, that's pretty much the gist of it. Um, you know, she's excited to live next to it and, you know, is excited about the prospect of them selling, selling their goods, but um, that's the only thing we had. Um. No one, no one attended the neighborhood meeting, so um, doesn't seem like there's much pushback on it. But um, again, you know, from a staff perspective, you know, there, you know, ob- obviously with anything, there could be unforeseen impacts that may not be considered.
Commissioner Jones?
I have one more, at least, uh, comment kind of question for staff. Um, the continuing theme with this case and the other one seems to be the program, New Roots for Refugees. Again, what they're wanting to do with the urban farm farming, I think, is commendable. But it sounds like to me that New Roots for Refugees, if they're going to advise and and counsel the folks in this program, that they need to be maybe better versed so that we don't set precedence that we don't want to set. Because that's what I'm hearing staff say. And by coincidence, I was involved in a program for refugees, but it was for a totally different uh, the skill set that they were getting. And so that's why I say it sounds like that's the common denominator. So my thought is that, you know, I I don't know what we're going to do with this case, because right now it just seems like a holdover would not be as advantageous as the previous case. But again, my advice and counsel would be the New Roots for Refugees, taking a step back. Because we're between a rock and a hard place, because what this petitioner wants is not really fitting that size of property. So I'm feeling like we almost have no good option for the petitioner because of the quandary.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Not seeing any, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
I really hate to do it, but given the circumstances, I'm going to make a motion to deny the petitioner's request. Uh, it does not fulfill, it's against the statutory requirements.
All right, motion for denial on Bozak case twenty twenty four dash zero one nine made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call?
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I'm.
Moller?
I.
Schwartz?
I.
Ward?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny this appeal based on the reasons listed in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you. This does conclude.
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn the meeting, I would like to make note that since this appeal was denied, um, we will not be hearing special use permit forty nine on the planning commission agenda. And also, since appeal, uh, the first appeal, B O Z A twenty twenty four dash zero one seven was denied, we will also not be hearing change of zone twenty twenty four dash zero one seven or plat twenty twenty four dash zero one nine on the planning commission agenda.
All right, thank you. So if you're here for those cases, uh, then they will not be heard. Uh, we will take a five minute recess. We'll come back. We'll get the city planning commission started soon as possible. Thank you all for your patience and we'll be back with you in a few minutes.
All right, well. Well. Uh, yeah, you already got chickens, man.
Buddy has a hot mic.
It's been taken care of. Hey Byron? Dan, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, everyone, we're gonna go ahead and start the August twelfth meeting of the City Planning Commission. Again, welcome, my name is Jeff Carson, I'm serving as chair of this meeting also. Uh, we'll make a few introductions as we get started. Uh, we have the planning staff with us tonight, we have James Malloy and Byron Toy, that they'll be making, providing the staff recommendations. We also have Michael Farley here with Unified Government Legal Counsel. Uh, Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Urban Planning and Urban Design is with us online, she'll be announcing the cases. And we have the following planning commissioners present this evening, Commissioner Armstrong here in the chambers with me, Commissioner Beth, Commissioner Ward also in the chambers. Online, we have Commissioner Ernst, Commissioner Jones, who is also serving as vice chair, Commissioner Muller, Commissioner Schwartz and Commissioner Miller. With that, I will turn it over to Secretary Park, uh, Parker, she'll read the opening statement of how we'll run tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the commission chamber, and Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. Planning Commission members attending by Zoom, please make sure you are visible during the meeting and use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in person in the commission chamber, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room as the application is being called. And the chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The planning commission is a voluntary body of citizens which will review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda. The planning commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, August twenty nine, twenty twenty four. For final plats and final plan reviews heard tonight, the planning commission's decision is final and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the planning commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time and the planning commission may by two thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five minute increments. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them by Chairman Carson. The planning commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@wycocasek.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the planning commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission or other interested parties, the planning commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at seven P M. The planning commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda and items on the consent agenda are final plats, final plans or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the planning commission or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the planning commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda and when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. If you are in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and the item you want to remove from the consent agenda. The planning commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the planning commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision on Thursday, August twenty nine, twenty twenty four at seven P M. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Special use permit application S P twenty twenty four dash zero four four, Tom Probes. I'm sorry, with Skyline Property Development LLC. Renewal of a special use permit for short term rental at ten South Hallick Street. Special use permit application S P twenty twenty four dash zero four five. Tristan Perkins, renewal of a special use permit for a short term rental at nineteen forty-five West Lawrence Court. Plat application twenty twenty four dash zero two four. Seth Reese, final plant, I four thirty-five Logistics Park, second plant for one industrial lot at ninety-eight hundred Leavenworth Road. It also has a corresponding final plan review at the same address. Plan review P R twenty twenty four dash zero one nine. Plat application, plat twenty twenty four dash zero two five. Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting. Final plat, Anne's New Edition for two industrial lots at twelve twenty-three Anne Avenue. Plan review application, P R twenty twenty four dash zero one zero, Musa Sabath. Final plan review to install E V chargers at an existing C store and fugling station at nineteen thirty North Ninety-Eighth Street. Plan review application, P R twenty twenty four dash zero one three, Brandon Carlson with the B R Companies. Final plan review to construct a new health clinic at ninety-four hundred State Avenue. Plan review application, P R twenty twenty four dash zero one six. Doug Clements with Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Final plan review to construct a new parking lot at Wine Dot High School at twenty-five oh one Minnesota Avenue. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Okay. Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August twelve, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furnace of the case and contained in the official file. The publications in the echo for the special use permits and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone request that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Janet. Uh, going to the commission, is anyone on the commission want anything removed from the consent agenda? They saying none, we'll go to the audience, anyone in the audience want anything removed from the consent agenda for special consideration? Seeing none, go ahead and entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Mr. Jones?
Motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Thank you, motion to, motion made by Commissioner Jones to approve the consent agenda in its entirety, is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the items on the consent agenda with the staff conditions and the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The two special use permits will go to the Board of Commissioners on August twenty eighth, everything else will be approved. If you're here for any of the items that are on the consent agenda, everything has been approved. There's no need for you to stay unless you'd like to stay for the meeting, we'd love to have you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, you did say uh, that that meeting was September the twenty-eighth and it's September twenty-ninth.
It's August twenty-ninth, right?
August twenty-ninth.
There we go, we've got both got it wrong, August twenty-ninth at seven P M.
All right, hopefully we're both on the same page now.
There we go.
Okay, and then the next two items on the agenda, of course, are change of zone seventeen and plat nineteen and those items will not be heard since the uh, appeal was denied. So that will take us to change of zone application, C O Z twenty twenty four dash zero two one. Justin Milburn with Milburn Civil Engineering. Change of zone from R one, single family district to M P two planned general industrial district to construct an equipment shop and storage facility at seventy-one O two and seventy-one O two R Holiday Drive. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August twelve, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furnace of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Milburn?
Yeah.
All right, good evening, go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Justin Milburn, I'm with uh, Milburn Civil Engineering, address is three, three, one, three, five, West Eighty-third Street, DeSoto, Kansas. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Mike Lyons with Midwest Milling. Uh, he's here to answer questions about the uh, business um, that he's operating. Uh, I've submitted a uh, presentation, if you guys could pull that up for me, it was a PDF. Eight or nine slides that kind of go over, kind of summarizing what the proposal is.
Give us one second, we'll get that pulled up.
Yeah, thank you. I'll email that to James about probably eleven thirty in the noon.
For those of you online, we're just waiting to get the presentation pulled up, we'll be with you all in just a second.
Yeah, I mean it's. So again, good evening, um. The property in question at uh, seventy-one O two Holiday Drive. Uh, it's under contract by Midwest Milling. Um, they're wanting to build a four thousand square foot uh, equipment shop on the um, on the property. Um, we're here tonight requesting a a rezoning and approval of development plan. Um, we're here tonight requesting a uh, rezoning and approval of development plan. Uh, essentially, um, the site plan shows access to uh, Holiday Drive. Uh, the site itself is located at the northeast corner of Seventy First Street and Holiday Drive. Uh, the site itself is roughly thirteen and a half acres. Uh, there's existing trees located along the west side of the property and on the south side adjacent to uh, Holiday Drive. Uh, the site plan, as you can see, the site, the building itself is kind of tucked into the southwest corner of the site. Uh, we did our best to minimize the tree removal, so we're trying to shield the building as much as we can with the existing trees that are out there. Um. Uh, the proposed zoning we're requesting uh, with the application was M two. Uh, the existing zoning itself is uh, R one, so we're gonna go from R one to a more of an industrial zoning. Uh, the future land use plan in this area shows the ground north of Holiday Drive as industrial, so we fit in line with the uh, future land use plan. Uh, as you can see, probably in the staff report, staff is recommending a uh, zoning of M P two, which I've talked with my client about that and they're fine with uh, going with that zoning in lieu of the M two. Uh, development plan you can see in front of you there, again, it's a four thousand square foot building, there we go. Yeah, that'd be the slide right there. So again, it's tucked in the southwest corner of the property, uh, it's a four thousand square foot uh, equipment building. Uh, we've got employee parking areas on north and south side. Uh, the stormwater detention area will be located in the southwest corner of the property. Again, we're trying to preserve the existing landscaping that's onsite on the west and south side. Uh, again, we're have access drive out to Holiday Drive. Uh, there's only gonna be roughly three or four employees working in this shop. Uh, there's gonna be minimal impact uh, traffic wise to uh, Holiday Drive, we did do a traffic impact study and it showed minimal impact to the uh, surrounding uh, infrastructure. Uh, next slide, please, there's a picture of the building elevations that they're wanting to build. Uh, just simply equipment shop. Uh, again, uh, just repair their uh, milling equipment that they have uh, on staff. Uh, so on the next side, slide, please. We hosted a neighborhood meeting on uh, July twenty fifth, uh, there's several neighbors that did show up. Had quite a few questions for us, uh, we think we addressed most of those uh, at that meeting. Uh, their concern was additional traffic, which we discussed the traffic impact study we did. Uh, they had questions about the actual operation of the milling business and Mister Lyons, he can discuss uh, his operations. Uh, a lot of people, they were questioning why they weren't notified uh, about the project. Uh, we notified people within two hundred foot of the property. I do have an exhibit next uh, that we can show where those neighbors showed up um, in relation to where the site is. So that the green line is a two hundred foot radius that we notified the neighbors, uh, those red dots indicate the neighbors that showed up uh, to that uh, neighborhood meeting. Uh, if you can scroll back, there's a couple of things I did want to cover on that. Um, back down, down one, there you go. Uh, again, there's a lot of questions about why they weren't notified, so we're clear that we notified per the, the code. Uh, they're questioning about noise and dust from the development. Uh, and they had a lot of questions about, they were concerned about screening of the building. So we went over uh, how we're trying to keep as much existing landscaping that we can. Uh, we do have to do some uh, screening from uh, the right away per staff comments. And they had questions about stormwater, which we uh, gonna put attention base on the southwest corner. So uh, slide please. Is that one we already discussed? So in conclusion, uh, we were requesting an into zoning uh, based on the discussion we had with staff today. Uh, they want us to uh, resone to an M P two, which we've, we're fine with that. Um, we concur with all the staff uh, conditions, so we're, we're fine with that. Um, Mister Lyons, you want to say anything?
You might just explain to us what a milling operation is, but give us your name and address first.
My name is Mike Lyons, eighty one thirty six Mill Ridge Street, Lenexa, Kansas. And so the milling business is, we're an asphalt milling company, which means we take up the asphalt on the street, mill it into a dump truck and it goes to a plant to be recycled. So it's a rope construction process.
Okay.
Now, none of this will be done onsite, all of it will be done out in the community. All we're doing is storing our equipment here for the winter, we won't even have any traffic during the summer except for a low boy coming in to pick up our equipment to take it to our jobs. We don't work in the shop during the summer, we'll be doing preventative maintenance during the winter. Now, we may bring a machine in for something that we need the shop for, but as a general basis, we're out in the field. And so we've been doing this for fifteen years, we're kind of a longstanding, well well-acknowledged company in the industry. Um, we have a second generation gonna continue, so this is a long-term play on our part. Big investment on our part and we want to be a good neighbor to the people around us and um, and I'm open to any questions.
All right, thank you, did you have anything else, Mister Milburn?
No, no, all the suggestions that you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor? Can I please come forward, are you speaking in favor? Okay, anyone in favor first? Seeing none, anyone opposed, please come forward.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name's Thomas Crafton, I live uh, up the street from this at sixty two oh five Holiday Drive. And uh, the property in question is right next to another asphalt company. And when you build it, when you have millings and you operate, I have some experience with this, they will end up storing millings on the lot. And you need, EPA has particular rules, exact rules on how to uh, have water runoff, what they call spoilage, um. I don't see any plans for that, dust control plans. Um, they call this a maintenance building, the EPA has exact uh, regulations on when you're doing maintenance on construction equipment, if you're washing it, things of that nature, you need reclaim, you need to go to either a pond or a reclaim pit to recycle the water. Um, any, anybody knows a construction equipment operates off hydraulic fluid, diesel fuel, if they're repairing it there, where is that runoff going? If you look at the, one of the slides, it shows a natural waterway that's right next to them. I don't see any plans that have been submitted to mitigate that problem, and if they do store onsite millings um, and they're there for any length of time, you know, with runoff from that, it can have be contaminated with hydraulic fluid, it can be contaminated with diesel fuel, just in the process of milling. Things happen, things break, wha- what will be the mitigation process for that?
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, we'll see if we can get you some answers. Anyone else want to speak for or against this case, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Karen Shaibe, sorry, it's like my third time at a podium, so.
That's alright.
You know, it's one of those things, um.
What's your address real quick?
I'm in South Turner neighborhood, I'm at thirty one oh one South Fifty Fourth Street. I was at their meeting, which they were very kind and there's nothing against their business. My concern is around the fact that it's a master plan change to industrial and taking industrial further down Holiday, kind of between that point and then how you get down to Lake Rivera, and it's right down from residential. That's kind of on the hill up there, and there were some people from that area that were concerned about bringing industrial further down as well.
Okay, all right, we'll see if we can get you an answer from the staff on that, thank you. Did a good job, by the way. Anyone else? They seeing no one in the chambers or no one online, we'll go ahead and go ba- back to Mister Milburn uh, and probably Mister Lyon, just question, either one of you wants to come up, just want to go back to the part that was discussed with regard of storage, basically, you're not gonna can you again clarify, you will not be storing any milling, is that correct?
We will not be storing millings on the property.
Okay, what about?
We mill, we mill, it's a commodity, millings are commodity. And we have a person right next door that is an asphalt plant, we can take our millings to the asphalt plant. It is in our best interest to stockpile those and keep those onsite when we can, we can sell those right, right next door. So we are not anything like J M Fahey. We're not an asphalt plant, we're not pretending to be an asphalt plant, all we want to do is put up a shop where we can work on our.
Okay, what about the cleaning of the, the uh, the uh, equipment is, in terms of any leftover millings or anything like that? That might wash off, things like that?
The equipment's cleaned onsite at the jobs that we do, and then it would be brought back, I can't imagine, I mean, I, I guess we, we would be washing down the equipment periodically maybe at the end of the season, but it'd be minimal.
Okay.
It's not gonna be a regular thing that we're cleaning our equipment onsite because we're not even gonna be there.
Okay, what about changing oil, hydraulic fluids, things like that, where, where are those, where are those?
On the job side also.
You change up?
You can change out all the.
So we need, what type of maintenance then is done at the shop?
At the end of the year, we do preventative maintenance, we go through the, with the checklist and make sure that everything's.
Would that not include changing oil, uh, changing hydraulic fluid, brake fluid, things like that in the vehicles or the?
But basically, I mean, ninety percent of the time would be out in the field.
But if that other ten percent, what happens with the, with the uh, the oil, the high, the fluids?
We, we, we're gonna have an oil burner in the uh, in the um, in the unit, so we, we would use that oil then to burn it off, or we'd, we'd give it to somebody, you know, sell it to our, or give it to one of the other people that we know that, that has that kind of oil burner.
Okay, all right, thank you, oh, and uh, that's fine, that'll take care of that. Um, all right, I'm done with you all and we'll go ahead and close the public portion now, we'll go to Director, sorry, Mister Malloy and get his comments.
Hey, I'll take the promotion.
And not yet.
James and Malloy Planning and Urban Design, again, we have a change of zone from R one to M P two general industrial district, again, they're wanting to, you know, use this as a shop to store and um, occasionally work on their equipment for their milling business, um. To date, we had no support, no opposition, there have been no notices of violation on the property, um. The plan K C K master plan actually does have this area, um, entire area as employment or, sorry, industrial, um, but um, areas to the south of Holiday and east of inland are for rural density residential, so like agriculture, but anything north of Holiday, west of inland is industrial, so this would fit into the master plan, this fits in with the surrounding, most of the surrounding zoning on that, on that block, um, again, there's several industrial properties to the east, west and north of this. Um, but with that, staff recommends approval with conditions.
So there's, so I'm sorry, so it does fit within the master plan and as far as increase of industrial towards Lake Rivera and all that, you're saying there are other places beyond that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, as shown by the map here, to the west and even to the east, there's industrial, um. Again, if this were, if this were on the south side of Holiday, that'd be a different discussion, but since this is on the north side of Holiday, towards the train tracks, um, you know, staff doesn't see much of an issue with it.
All right, thank you, other questions for staff? I'm sorry, was the recommendation for approval?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve uh, change of zone two zero two four dash zero two one, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward of uh, change of zone application, two thousand and twenty four dash zero two one. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, any discussion?
Do I need to put in there about the adjustment from M two to M P two?
It's already in the staff report.
I just want to make sure.
That's right, thank you. Any other further, excuse me, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone, two thousand and twenty four dash zero two one to M P two planned general industrial district, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, this case will be heard once again on August twenty ninth at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners in this room, thank you.
Mister Chairman, we have two applications that we're going to hear together and then we'll vote on them separately. Change of zone application, C O Z, two thousand and twenty four dash zero two one, Roger Barrett. Change of zone from R two two family district to T N D Traditional Neighborhood Design District to construct a forty four unit apartment development at forty two twenty five Mission Road. And plan review application, P R, two thousand and twenty four dash zero one seven for the same use at the same address. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August twelve, two thousand and twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No. Thank you, Mister Barrett.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you very much, it's a pleasure to be with you again. My name is Roger Barrett with Civil Engineering Firm, S K Design Group in Overland Park, Kansas, I also live in the same city, Overland Park, Kansas. Um, we have several development team members here tonight to present this uh, twenty four unit apartment uh, project with you and the, the number one and, and the, the first one that's going to speak to, tonight is the Community Housing of Wyandotte County, Mister Brennan Crawford.
Right.
Hello, Commissioners, a pleasure to see you all today, some of you know me, some of you don't. Um, I am Brennan Crawford, I'm the Executive Director and C E O of Community Housing of Wyandotte County. Uh, Community Housing of Wyandotte County is a twenty five plus year old comprehensive community development organization, serving Wyandotte County. Our entire reason for existing is to work beside our neighbors uh, to make thriving, healthy neighborhoods, and we mostly do that through housing. Uh, we have historically been a single family uh, developer centered on homeownership. We still believe that homeownership is absolutely at the core um, of, of the opportunities that we want to provide to every community member that wants it. But what we've discovered over the past ten years is that as the cost of hi- housing has risen more quickly than incomes, um, we've been very cautiously and carefully uh, working with some great partners to develop some multifamily housing as well as some apartment housings. Uh, this is one such project, uh, this came out of a conversation with the Rosedale uh, Neighborhood Association. Um, our good friends at Beachwood uh, who are the property owners, uh, the landowners rather, um, they'll speak a little bit later. Um, but uh, essentially, this is a, a response to the need for high quality mixed income housing uh, in, in Rosedale, a community that we've made a commitment over the past couple of years to invest more deeply in. So that is how this project came to be. And with that, I'll turn it over to Megan Painter, our Director of Neighborhood Development, to talk a little bit more about the project itself and about the neighborhood meeting that uh, that we held, uh, good conversation with the neighborhood a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Megan Painter, I'm the Director of Neighborhood Development at Community Housing Wyandotte County and I reside at thirteen twenty seven Barnett Avenue in K C K. So what I would really like to talk about, uh, first of all, is this site and, you know, we were going back and forth a lot with the neighbors. We had some really good discussion, Rose daily and show up uh, is definitely a pattern that we see and and the biggest thing that kept coming up over and over again is this intersection being very busy and not being safe for bicycles or for pedestrians, especially whenever it's close to Rosedale Park up here and yes, it is a very busy intersection. Uh, we agree with that, we've been working a lot with our traffic engineer, Public Works, um, and just our civil engineer and basically what we've come up with is uh, basically, when you're coming onto the site, it's gonna be right turn only so that we reduce the amount of times people are crossing traffic there. Uh, I go to Rosedale Park quite a bit and I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands whenever I try to cross Mission. So, so we're trying our best to work through existing conditions there with the traffic. Uh, whenever I'm talking to the traffic engineer, they've said that the amount of people coming in and out is negligible just because it's uh, only twenty. just because it's, uh, only twenty-four units. Uh, and they only expect thirty vehicles to be going on and off the property during peak hour. So lots of back and forth discussion there. Um, and I think that it, there's a place for advocacy, uh, for sure. Whenever it comes from making this, uh, a better, safer street for our neighbors. Other conversations that I had had to do a lot with, um, site drainage and being a good neighbor with site drainage uh, and how retaining walls are going to work on the site and fencing is going to work on the site. I think we worked through most of those discussions. Um, with everything gonna, uh, that's going to be handled quite well, uh, according to our civil engineer. So that's really encouraging. And I did hear back and forth with some people who are just not comfortable with this particular amount of twenty-four units going on to the property. And then others, even in the same household who are just fine with it. So, uh, we heard a lot of, uh, things on both sides, but mostly, uh, neighborhood feedback is, you know, hey, we, we like what you're doing, but um, please consider, uh, safety whenever, uh, you're developing your site.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Erin Strika here representing Rosedale Development Association, living KCK eight forty-one Shawnee Road. Um, I'm here because in my thirteen years working at RDA, I've seen at least a dozen proposals from the site. Everything from gas stations to retail centers to earlier versions of this proposal. It's a really important corner. Um, it's designated in the Rosedale area master plan as a neighborhood center and on a neighborhood corridor. And it's really important to all of us to get it right. It's also, as Ms. Painter mentioned, a very tricky corner due to the forty-second, forty-third admission intersection. And as you heard, a lot of work has gone into figuring out how to make it safe for everybody involved. RDA supports this proposal because it provides badly needed housing that allows families to live within walking and busing distance from Frank Russian Elementary, from the jobs that exist at KU's campus and from the neighborhood amenities that make Rosedale a great place to live. If our community is able to take steps to sync up our housing costs and locations with our local incomes and our jobs in Rosedale, we'll see people living closer to where they work. The Rosedale master plan calls this location efficient housing and anticipates a big range of benefits from less traffic to greater family involvement in schools, improved housing availability and increased residential stability. Um, as Mr. Crawford mentioned, wages in our area have not kept up with housing costs and I can't tell you how often in my office I hear from folks who are looking everywhere for housing in their price range, especially for a two or three bedroom apartment, and they just can't find it. And that hits especially hard when the family's trying to keep their kids in a Rosedale school or stay near the park they love or otherwise just stay in Rosedale. We kind of have to work on all sides of the equation, bringing in new housing at all price points and also pursuing policies that make it uh, easier to, but get a well-paying job in our area. So the Rosedale area master plan included a detailed economic analysis of existing housing and jobs in Rosedale and projected demand between twenty sixteen and twenty forty and found that to keep up with housing demand, we'll need twenty-three to ninety-eight new units of housing per year. In the last three years, we've seen some progress on this, including two hundred and seventy-two new units of higher end market rate housing on Rainbow Boulevard and a hundred and forty-three units approved not yet started at forty, at, uh, uh, of luxury housing at forty-six and Rainbow, all on Rainbow Boulevard. We have seen very little in the way of mixed income housing, workforce housing, or housing that's appropriate for families not on a major thoroughfare like Rainbow. In addition to the economic data, the master plan highlights the importance of diversity as a strength of Rosedale and states that we're better off because we have a diversity of ages, races, ethnicities and incomes. We want to continue to support diversity and welcome everyone into the community. This project is badly needed to welcome new residents with a diversity of incomes and to keep some of our existing residents. Um, with housing located in easy walking and busing distance to well-paying jobs, great schools and neighborhood amenities. Finally, I want to note that although we badly need the housing, as I mentioned, we've seen a lot of proposals for this corner and RDA didn't really get on board, offer our support, um, until this proposal that you have before you today until uh, CHWC came in as the developer and the property manager, which we viewed as kind of the missing piece to making a project at this corner work. Uh, it's a tricky corner, managing a small apartment complex like this in a way that benefits both the tenants and the surrounding neighborhood is a extremely tricky job. And CHWC has the experience and the capacity to do it well of, as they've demonstrated with many projects in KCK and we hope to see them demonstrate more in Rosedale. Um, these are the guys you want doing a project like this and RDA feels very confident supporting this project. Um, happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you very much, Erin. It's nice to have you back. We haven't seen you for a while. Anyone else? Is that it? Is that it for the team? If anybody else wants to speak, go ahead and come on up and be ready to go. It just cuts into your time when you're trying to decide.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ian Arnold and, uh, uh, my, uh, my address is of, uh, four two two five Mission Road. So we're just to the north is where, uh, and then I, I work and, and we own that house that's to the north of this proposed development.
Okay.
Um, and we bought this lot m- many, a few years ago with the idea of building, um, apartments on it. This plan is the only one that we, we've been able to make work based on the math and the area. Um, and we used various funding mechanisms to get it to the place where we, we can get it launched with a partnership with CHWC. Do you have any questions for, I were, and I, my brother and I are very committed to this area and, um, we would like to see this work.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the design team? Is that it?
Okay.
Okay. Anything else you wanted to add, sir, before we close and go to public comment? Okay. With that, any questions of the developer or the, I mean, sorry, the applica- applicant?
I do.
Commissioner Ward?
Uh, I got several questions, actually. Um, she threw out a lot of buzzwords, um, for the type of, the, I don't remember what her name was.
Who are you wanting?
Navy, navy blue, navy blue shirt right there.
Aaron? You want Aaron to come up?
Sure.
All right, Aaron, you want to come on? Thank you.
There's so many presenters, I didn't know who-
That's all right.
Hi there.
You threw out quite a few buzzwords, uh, in your presentation, um, that we hear on the news all the time now. Um, so I just have some questions. Obviously I, I was a police officer and I actually worked in that area. Um, and just down the road, you have a low income housing, what, which is a major, major, major crime problem.
Yeah.
Um, so-
We got a few of those.
Right? For sure, in that area. Um, and so it, uh, seen another apartment complex go up in that area, which is and what, from what you're telling me is going to be, you know, low income or subsidized housing, it seems like. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let the, uh, the rest of the team talk about the mix of housing and the price points and everything, but yeah, it, it's mixed income housing.
Okay. Um, and so I guess a couple of things I have, I guess what it asks is, uh, security. Um, what is security on the property going to look like? Uh, cause you're going to need it in the area.
Yeah.
And then, uh, screening of applicants or who's available. I know like public housing, like, you know, they have rules about who can stay over, who can do this, who can do that. And if they're caught with somebody who shouldn't be there, they lose it. I'm just kind of wondering those questions.
Yeah, and I can't answer any of them because I don't work for CHWC, but they can.
Okay.
I will just say, we deal with a lot of bad landlords, um, and one of the things that makes me feel better about that is having known the Arnold brothers for several years. They come, they volunteer at community workdays. They're here, they're accountable. And CHWC's strong track record, I don't anticipate the problems with neglectful landlords that we often get.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, can I? Who wants to answer all that, Megan?
I guess my concern would be for the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors who have to live next to it.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. So, um, a- as I said to the neighbors on the neighborhood meeting, like, our reason for existing is to be good neighbors. Um, so I, I've got a pretty big team. Uh, we have in-house property management. I have a entire housing counseling team. I have a community health worker on staff. We've got architects and construction professionals on staff. Um, so we take really seriously, uh, that, that very issue that you raised. Um, you know, and in every project, you, you, you might have a handful of bad actors, right? And the key is to get a hold on that, uh, soon because what the, what that does is it makes the, the good actors uncomfortable and, uh, unable to enjoy the place that they live. And so um, that is a, that's something we, we are extremely proactive about and take pretty seriously.
Um, cameras on the property, security on the property, what does that look like for you?
That might actually be a question. Cameras, camera systems? Yeah, cameras on the property, uh, no onsite security. It's a pretty small, uh, location. But we're, you know, my property management team is here in town, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Let me find out.
All right.
Other questions for the applicant? Hey, Commissioner Miller?
I'll actually hold my comments for later. It's not really a question.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone in the audience that hasn't spoke, want to speak in favor of the project, please come forward. Mr. Watkins?
Good evening. Matt Watkins, uh, four zero two three North one hundred and eleven street. Um, come here as a, uh, supporter of CHWC, but also as chairman of the housing authority at KCK. Um, I can guarantee you that this is not public housing. And this is the exact kind of development we need. This corner has sat vacant for a long time. And this opportunity here is frankly lightning in a bottle. And I think it ought to be supported. So, um, CHWC does a lot of good work in the community. I support them one hundred percent. Um, Brennan and his team are professional and you can trust what he's talking about. So I've, I'm here to support them.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers before I go online? Okay, we'll go to Gail Bergman. Gail Bergman online.
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Uh, yeah, Gail Bergman. I live at four five two zero Francis Street. I, I'm also in Rosedale really close by. I'm at that intersection a lot too, walking, biking and driving. Um, I'm very supportive of this project. I'm an RDA board member as well, and we need more housing in the neighborhood. And I was also supportive of, uh, the housing at the end of my street. So I'm excited for more housing in Rosedale. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone opposed would like to speak? Jesse, I have you queued up, ready to speak?
I, I'm actually in favor. Sorry. I raised my hand a second too late.
Okay, that's all right. What's your name, please?
Jesse Rucker. I live at four four one zero Adams Street. I, um, yeah, uh, uh, my, my kids go to Rose, um, to Frank Russian here in Rosedale. And, um, a lot of their friends recently have been getting priced out of the neighborhood. Um, these, uh, and these are, these are families that enrich the neighborhood and, um, and work here and play here and live here. So I know firsthand, um, it's sad to lose good neighbors to, um, to just getting priced out of a lot of the, the rental opportunities there are in Rosedale. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand. Seeing no one else, we'll go, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to, excuse me, um, Mr. Malloy, get his comment.
Thank you, Chairman. James Malloy, planning in urban design. Again, we have a twenty-four unit, uh, apartment building here. Um, with that, there's a change of zone from R two to TND, uh, traditional neighborhood design district. Um, um, that district's a bit of a specialized district instead of being a district that lays out what you can do. You know, certain, certain portions of what you can do are dictated by what you're building there. So in this case, it's an apartment building. So it has its own set of, um, regulations with that. Um, and this is also final development plan for this. Um, to date, staff had received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. Um, the property's had several notices of violation over the year for weeds, trash, other issues like that. Um, staff's recommending approval with conditions. Um, we do want to add one condition, um, that wasn't added in the staff report. That is, they need to come back and replat the property to, you know, reflect, reflect what they are wanting the property to look like. Um, I think we missed that in the report. But otherwise, staff recommends approval.
You're asking for a replat?
Um, yes, as a condition of approval, I should come back and replat it. And that would be, that would be an added condition.
All right. Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Jones?
That replat, um, this, I would need to be in the plan review?
Um, they can come back after post approval and, uh, plat this.
Which, do you want that condition in? By the plan review motion?
I mean-
Change, to change of zone in-
Yeah, it can go, it can go in either or.
All right.
Your wish choice.
Either or or both?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Jones, you good? Thank you. Anything, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve, uh, change of zone case number two. Yeah, change of zone is two zero two four dash, uh, two two, subject to staff stipulations and comments with the addition of the replating of the property.
Thank you. Motion to approve change of zone application twenty twenty four dash zero twenty-two made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Uh, includes staff stipulations in addition to the existing, excuse me, in, in addition to the additional comment of replating, uh, the project. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Schwartz?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone COZ twenty twenty four dash zero two two with the revised conditions passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I'll take a motion on the plan review application. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the plan review case number two zero two four dash zero one seven, subject to staff stipulations and comments. And I will reiterate, including the replating of the property.
Thank you. Motion for approval made on plan review application twenty twenty four dash zero one seven by Commissioner Jones, uh, with all staff stipulations and the additional comment about replating. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Schwartz?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve PR twenty twenty four dash zero one seven, subject to the revised conditions, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The change of zone application will be heard one more time, August twenty ninth at seven PM before the board of commissioners. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications we'll hear together and then vote on them separately. Change of zone application COZ twenty twenty four dash zero two three Brian Hochstein. Change of zone from R one single family district to MP two plan general industrial district for outside storage facility at nineteen thirty South Seventy-four Street. And we'll also hear the corresponding final plan review for the same use at the property PR twenty twenty four dash zero one eight. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August twelfth, twenty twenty four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No. Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Brian Hochstein with MKEC Engineering, eleven eight twenty seven West one hundred and twelfth Street in Overland Park, Kansas. I'm representing VS Services, uh, VS Services has developed a few challenging sites around, uh, Kansas City, Kansas, and this is certainly one of those. Uh, nineteen thirty, um, South Seventy Fourth, I would like to give some site context. Thank you. So the area in blue, um, kind of lays out what we're looking at here, this is a touch over twenty acres. Primarily, we're here because the property to the west and east are both zoned residential. Uh, we're, we're zoned residential, and the property owner has, uh, improved the property, and we'll discuss that in a bit. But I want to talk about just kind of what our, our neighborhood looks like, so due to the west, residential, due east, residential, to the north is MP two. We have other MP two, and there are a few homeowners in the area, but primarily this area is highly industrial. And then we've got the railroad road right of way to the south. The next one, so our north, um, this is, uh, green expectations landscape to the north, there's owned MP two. The next one. This is the east side, uh, the, if you go to the next one, you can see the kind of the street condition. So a lot of outdoor storage is occurring without any screening, uh, this property is zoned residential. Uh, the next one.
That property is zoned residential?
It's zoned residential. Um, the next one, yep, that's what we're going to talk about. Uh, then the south, of course, is the railroad right away, um, and, and our site, long time ago, used to be a cattle yard. So this was where they were dropping the cattle, moving everything through, and the owner bought the property. Uh, they basically had to demolish all the infrastructure that still remained from, from the cattle operations that had been defunct for fifty years, so. The next slide, I mean, to the west, we have the, uh, water district number one for Johnson County Treatment Facility, zoned residential. Um, so that gets into kind of our issue, our property owner, um, purchased the property is entirely in the floodplain, go the next slide, please. Entirely in the floodplain, uh, they have gone through processes with FEMA to, in a letter of map revision, to create two pad sites on the property, effectively making them the site usable. As soon as we, they got done doing the grading operations on site, they immediately began experiencing illegal dumping. Uh, massive illegal dumping, uh, dump trucks, debris, construction materials, and so they constructed a fence. This is a big part of our issue, so if you go to the next slide. We need to rezone to MP two, effectively for the fence and, and to protect the property. And you see the fences there, he's already constructed, the property is gated, that has stopped the illegal dumping and, and made it much more difficult. We feel that the property fits the context of the area, uh, like you said, it's improved, you know, it's, it's, uh, pretty, pretty nice to take, effectively create a six and an eight acre pad side out of, out of nothing. Uh, the rest of the property remains in the floodplain and access detention. And then, uh, we have on, on our proposal, we're not proposing any structures, utilities, lighting, or really any other improvements. We're utilizing it for outdoor storage for the time being, um, and we agree with those conditions that staff have set forth um, to, to use it as outdoor storage. Uh, the one condition we would like to discuss is landscaping, condition number three, we agree, um, and if you go to the next slide, Byron. We agree to put in a, a tree canopy down in that lower area, this stays pretty wet down there, and so we're required to do one tree per ninety-five or one tree per ten thousand square feet, that's ninety-five trees on our site, um, that's what we're showing there. Basically outlining the low area that we have out there, but condition three also is asking us to do a full landscape buffer on both the west portion and the east portion of the property because we do align with the residential, these own properties, so we understand why staff put the c- condition in there to buffer it because we're abutting residential. But the owner, and, and we are asking for relief from that landscape buffer because we already have a six foot tall opaque screen fence for the property, and effectively the properties both to the west and east, the water treatment plant. And for lack of a better word, we're junkyard, are, are zoned residential and causing us to have that, so, uh, happy to take any questions you guys may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yeah, I'll see it this time, so we'll go ahead and open up the public, anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, raise your hand? Or come to the microphone? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and we will go to Mr. Malloy and.
It'll be me, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
It'll be me.
All right, uh, we'll go to Mr. Toy.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, so to answer the applicant's question related to, um, screening on the west and east side of the property line. We can't give any relief to that specifically as the staff because that's actually a code requirement within the screening and landscaping section of the code. So the only thing that can be done would be to have relief would be to apply for variance to not have that buffer, which is I think a fifteen foot buffer when M two or M three is abutting, R one Single Family or any residentially zoned district. So variance need to be applied for, for the east and west property line to, to get what the applicant is asking for. Other than that, staff recommend approval of the application.
All right. Questions for staff? I want to discuss the property across the street or next door after the meeting. All right.
Do we know it?
All right, thank you. Um, any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Mr. Jones?
Motion to approve a change of zone case number two zero two four dash zero two three subject to staff stipulations and comments, and we will be keeping in, uh, per staff's recommendation, condition number three.
All right, thank you. Motion for approval of change of zone application twenty twenty four dash zero twenty three made by Commissioner Jones, is that a second Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone COZ twenty twenty four dash zero two three subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, now I need a motion on plan review application twenty twenty four dash zero one eight. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve review case number two zero two four dash zero one eight, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you, motion to approve plan review application twenty twenty four dash zero one eight made by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones? Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve PR twenty twenty four dash zero one eight subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, the change of zone application will be heard one more time, August twenty ninth, seven PM in this room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have two more applications that'll be heard together and voted on separately. Change of zone application COZ twenty twenty four dash zero two four, Brian Lavery. Change of zone from AG Agriculture District to CP three Planned Commercial District for an outdoor mini golf course and an event center at ninety four hundred State Avenue. And the corresponding preliminary plat Home Field Golf, plat twenty twenty four dash zero two two for one commercial lot. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August twelve, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I talked with some proponents of the, of the application.
All right, thank you.
Who was that that spoke?
That was Commissioner Ward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lavery?
I'm Richard Napper.
Okay, that's fine, you're the one dressed for golf, so you go ahead, you know, it's not a requirement, you dress in a theme.
I, I figured it would work that.
Okay, it, it's working so far, we'll see how it goes.
Uh, Richard Napper on behalf of Home Field, actually HFS KCK LLC, ninety-two fifty State Avenue. The Home Field Showcase Center recently completed and had to get that plug in, if you've not been there, please come by. I'm going to start this presentation tonight and hand it off to the experts in back of me. But we thought it important to give the planning commission at least our perspective as the master plan developer and the master plan owner on this particular user. I've been on this project since twenty thirteen. And about day one, I came on this project, I was inundated with people from this community and surrounding communities. Why can't we get a Topgolf? Why can't we? We want one, it fits. Well, it took a little bit of time, but here we are today, and on the screen you'll see Topgolf Kansas City, Kansas. This would be part of our overall four hundred acre plus or minus master plan Starbond District, uh, named Home Field. I've been in front of you several times the past couple of years with some very unique assets. And I hope you're all pleased with what you've approved and what we've built. And in the past, I have asked you for approval of these new unique assets that did not fit within a certain design box, it's almost impossible. Home Field Baseball, uh, Home Field Showcase Center, Margaritaville Resort, the Atlas Nine Museum, which by the way is under construction, steel in the air, and the Margaritaville Resort will open in June of twenty twenty five. It's impossible to put those in a design box, and I don't care how hard you try, they're too unique, they're too special. We are a Starbond District, and as such, it is incumbent upon us to bring unique attractions and unique assets to Wyandotte County in the state of Kansas, and this is yet another example of a unique asset that is a tremendous for this community, and if you think about what's under construction and what's completed out there today. Between the sports assets, the Margaritaville Resort, Atlas Nine, Topgolf, other, I mean, attractions that you've probably read about that I'll be back in front of you again here shortly, there's nothing like this for five hundred miles or further. So we could not be more excited about this use. As I said, we are a Starbond District, uh, this ten plus acres were Topgolf, will go if approved this evening. Uh, is part of the former water park and part of the twenty fifteen Starbonds that were issued by the unified government of Wyandotte County. The sales tax from this facility will go to the twenty fifteen Starbonds, so that is revenue currently that we do not have, and it goes towards servicing those bonds that were sold in twenty fifteen, so I think that's an important thing to consider as well. This facility, like Margaritaville, like Home Field, like Atlas Nine, it's not a generic office building, it's not a big box retailer, it's not a fast food pad. It is a state of the art attraction, you have the most highly coveted, sought after golf entertainment user in the country, ready to go right in our project. There are some design elements from staff's report, and we certainly respect staff's opinion on this. But we also understand with the expertise of Topgolf, some of the things they proposed, we as Home Field are completely in favor of, and I will tell you, having our company put, oh, the Margaritaville at a hundred and fifty million dollar investment. The Atlas Nine that we're co-owner of, a thirty million dollar investment, the sports facilities in excess of a hundred million dollars, and all the land out there we own. If we thought for one second the design elements on Topgolf were, did not fit the character of our project, I would not be here tonight. We are in absolute full support of this application as Topgolf has submitted. I have seen more or less this prototype, this version, this, I don't even know, five point O of, of this facility, and it is absolutely magnificent and something that we would be proud of, and we hope you would as well. There is certainly nothing wrong with design codes at all, and, and they, they work well many times. On unique assets like Topgolf, like Margaritaville, Atlas Nine and other projects out there, they don't always work, not, one size does not fit all. So I, I am hopeful that upon completion of our presentation and staff's comments, uh, I'm hopeful you like what you see, and we would respectfully request an approval this evening based on the plans as Topgolf has submitted. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to the experts with Topgolf that can answer more detailed questions and walk through their presentation, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening, Todd Waldo with Topgolf, um, eighty-seven fifty North Central Expressway, Dallas, Texas. Uh, we are seeking your support tonight for a change of zone in a preliminary plat. This is going to be a great project for the community, uh. This is one of our, we got a, can we go to the next slide, please, just give an overview? This is a project, as Richard mentioned, is part of the overall home field development, over a hundred and twenty acres. Uh, a lot of world-class destination type of users within that development. Uh, and we're hoping to be the next one to, to, uh, be included in this overall development. Lots of economic development benefits, job creation, lots of community benefits as well, uh, that we offer. Uh, this will be a venue, uh, proposed to be the third venue in the state of, state of Kansas. Currently have one operating in Overland Park, which opened in, uh, June of twenty fifteen. And we had another venue, which is similar to what we're proposing here, that opened in Wichita, Kansas, uh, in December of twenty twenty two. Um, so lots of great opportunities here to be part of a world-class destination with Home Field, uh, certainly with other, um, destination, um, uses within the, the, uh, uh, the general area, including the Speedway and the sports fields and, uh, Sporting KC Stadium. But, uh, as you can see, we're positioned directly south of the Margarita, Margaritaville Hotel and Resort that's under construction right now. Uh, just to the east of Camping World. Um, and just to the north of some overflow parking that's used for Home Field as well. Uh, we do have some multifamily residential further to the east, uh, that we've taken into consideration with our uh, civil design and landscape design and whatnot to, uh, minimize any type of impact to that adjacent user. Could we go to the next slide, please? Uh, just a few highlights, I've got some photos to share actually of the Wichita venue, but, uh, just, just some highlights. This is a brand new, uh, prototype that we're planning on, um, uh, you know, constructing here in, in Kansas City, again, as I mentioned, very similar to the one in Wichita. Uh, first of its kind, very community focused, family friendly, uh, two-story building, sixty-four hitting bays. Uh, all the latest and greatest technology with top tracer technology and other, uh, very premium, uh, uh, fixtures associated with it. Um, outdoor patio area, mini golf, again, this is more of a family focused venue, if you've been to Overland Park, that's a relatively large venue, three stories, one hundred and two bays, just in comparison, this is two stories, sixty-four bays. Um, we got to the next slide, please? Yeah, these are just a few representative photos of what, uh, uh, we're proposing here in Kansas, there we go, thank you. Uh, just a photo of the exterior of the building, and again, uh, very modern contemporary design. I know there's a few, uh, comments from staff that we'll get into in a minute, uh, regarding exterior building materials. But this is just a view of the nighttime, uh, view of the, uh, front of the building. Next slide, please? So this is a photo of the inside of the building within our race restaurant, uh, and bar area, we've got a full-service restaurant and bar. Uh, and this is again, uh, high-quality finishes, uh, something that's been very well received in other communities that we've constructed this thus far. We've got six or seven of these similar type of venues in operation across the United States uh, that have opened over the past two or three years that have been, uh, wildly successful in those, uh, in those markets. Next slide, please? Uh, another view of the same, uh, essentially, uh, restaurant and bar just at night, uh, again, large video wall for, uh, patrons that, uh, can come watch sports or other uh, other things that within that, uh, within that area, can we get the next slide? Uh, view from the hitting bay, again, all of the latest and greatest technology. Uh, seating for six to eight people, all of the clubs and equipment are provided. Uh, really, this is something that, uh, will be a huge benefit to the community, uh, and hopefully well received tonight at Planning Commission. Next slide, please? Uh, again, just another view, uh, certainly if you've been to a Topgolf before, very unique characteristics of the building, uh, and essentially the entire property. Uh, net poles, netting. Uh, net poles, netting, really to contain the balls within the field of play. Uh, and then also the technology of the T-line, uh, with, uh, uh, with all of the special lighting arrangements and camera technology for the top tracer, uh, system to work efficiently and effectively. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just, you know, some personal touches to the interior of the building to make it more community focused, a lot of callouts to the location. Uh, just making it a little bit more, uh, again, focused in the community. Next slide. Uh, we do have an outdoor patio associated that with mini golf. It really just appeals to, uh, a wider range of of patrons, all skill levels and ages. Uh, also frames the building very well, softens it some. This is actually a very good view of some of the exterior building materials that are, that are proposed for the building. Uh, different mixture of materials with, um, uh, metal panels. Uh, we've got EPHIS, we've got some high-level wood grain finish EPHIS. Uh, for this particular building, we've actually added some brick, uh, accents as well to give it a little more architectural interest. Uh, but this is general, the composition of what's being proposed. Next slide, please. Another photo at night of the outdoor patio. Again, some, been something very popular with our customers to have an outdoor option for uh, food and beverage and lounging, um, while they may be waiting for a bay or just enjoying, uh, food and beverage with their family and friends. Next slide. Uh, this is kind of a combined, um, hitting bay with an event space. Uh, Topgolf is very popular for corporate and social events, and this is a, um, an area of the building that can accommodate larger groups for those types of functions. Uh, just gives you a sense of the scale and also some of the, um, customization of that space to accommodate, uh, food and beverage and larger events. Next slide, please. Uh, a lot of questions that we receive with respect to lighting. Um, this is actually a photo at night of a similar type of venue in Boise, Idaho. Uh, all of our lighting, uh, none of it is traditional sports lights. None of the lights are uh, roof mounted or on the net poles themselves. Everything is mounted under the canopy of the building. Uh, LED light fixtures that shine in more of a diagonal direction to illuminate the surface of play. That is one item that that is very, um, very critical to the successful operation of Topgolf with our top tracer technology and our camera technology or the lighting fixtures, the arrangement, uh, and certainly the orientation of those fixtures. But this gives you a sense of uh, how those, how that lighting really dies out in the outfield. I know that a photometrics plan has been submitted as well. That details the foot candle levels, more of a, uh, technical engineering drawing, but, uh, this is just to represent that all that light is contained within the field of play. There's no, uh, spillage off-site, so no, no light pollution from that effect. Uh, I do know we have a number of deviations, um, that we'd like to, uh, discuss from some of the uh, staff recommendations. Uh, so I will turn that over to our development engineer, Kevin Nowak, to go through those one by one, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm, my name is Kevin Nowak. I'm with Arco Construction, where the design build general contractor for Topgolf, uh, across the country, located at 500 West Monroe in Chicago. Um, so yes, uh, as, as Todd stated, we are, uh, we've of course reviewed the stack, staff recommendations and conditions for approval. Um, and we would like to just make, or at least, um, request the following modifications to some of these um, approval conditions. First being, um, one, really B, C, and D. Those are gonna be the modifications to some of the building materials. And as, as Todd has mentioned with Topgolf, really the standard is the more EPHIS look with the high glazing and the metal panels. Um, and here, what we've done to, to try to accommodate the local design guidelines is to include brick along the ground level, um, which is, which is a standard local guidelines, and we feel that it, it meets the design intent of the area. Um, the next would be the lighting, which would be condition number four. Uh, specifically, but the language says which does not cast any light vertically or horizontally towards the residences to the east and southeast. And we hope with that previous photo, you could see that while technically there is light that shines out onto the outfield, we can't really have a an outfield or illuminated outfield without doing so, and in which case we wouldn't really have a gameplay. So that's the modification to number four. Number 12 is essentially the same thing. It's really, we need to remove the language, direct light 90 degrees downward. Again, hitting off the T-line to the outfield. We can't direct it 90 degrees and still be able to see where the ball is going. And in addition, it's the top tracer technology. The cameras won't be able to pick up the balls. That's right. Well, and we will still meet the zero foot candles at the property line. Of course, we can still accommodate that. And then lastly, um, condition number 22 is the architectural screens on the T or along the T-line out towards the outfield. We can't completely screen um, along the parapet, and that's really just for gameplay and those top tracer technology that those cameras won't be able to pick up the ball, um, which will allow us for the proper gameplay. So aside from that, I, I think we're in agreement with the majority of the conditions, uh, and we would seek approval to, uh, the staff recommendations plus our modifications to, to some of these conditions.
Okay, thank you. You stay close. We may need some clarification of what you're talking about.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else?
I think that's everyone.
Is that it? Okay. Questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Mr. Beth?
What's the, uh, average size of the Topgolf's around the country? How many bays do most of them have?
Yeah, it, it varies. We have four or five different venue prototypes. Um, this one that we're proposing, 64 Overland Parks 102. Uh, this really gives us an opportunity where we're going into different sized markets or adding an additional venue to uh, a market where a venue exists already. Um, but we have ranging from 36 bays to 110 bays.
Yeah, that's, that's my question is the, the difference because I go to the one at Overland Park quite a bit. And I just wonder why we're getting short at half the distance.
Well.
Is this a Wyandotte County thing or what?
No, sir. Well, a-again, adding.
The stepchild question.
Well, it's, it's, it's the chicken or the egg, right? Which one would you do first? Uh, in order to have two successful venues in a market, if we were to oversize it, it may not be as successful as we would hope. So trying to have it as a compliment to Overland Park.
Or we will take over on Park's business, right?
Well, there will be some, there will split some business there.
Well, there is a cannibalization kind of thing that does happen in, in markets where you have multiple locations.
But unlike, um, you know, a Home Depot or, or, uh, grocery Walmart or something like that, that may have multiple uh, stores within a market. Uh, we don't, you know, we are more regional, regionally based, uh, in a destination. So we have to be very cautious about the location that we choose and how, uh, you know, how the build out for that location as well. So the goal from everyone here tonight is just to be extremely successful for many, many years to come. Uh, so we feel that's, this is the right size, given this new prototype and given the fact that it is something that uh, is very appealing, uh, in a contrast to Oakland Park.
All right.
All right.
That's good. All right. Other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come forward. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Thomas Crafton, 6205 Holiday Drive. I have, uh, no problem with, uh, the Wyandotte County, uh, building commercial facilities. But in the past, we have been saddled with numerous commercial entities that receive star bonds and the county ends up paying for. They don't pay their property taxes and I, if they're going to come in here, I would like to see a living wage guarantee. We, Wyandotte County is saddled with numerous businesses that play well below the, a living wage. $10 an hour, $12 an hour jobs do not benefit the county if you still qualify for government assistance programs. If they're going to take star bond money, I would like to see something where they guarantee that the employees that they do employ can be a positive influence on the county and pay a wage where that people can actually live on now. And that has to be around $18 to $20 an hour nowadays.
Okay. I appreciate your concern. Unfortunately, it's not a matter that we can take up at this body. Encourage you to talk to the Board of Commissioners, as those are things that they can certainly discuss. It's just not a matter that we can take into consideration in tonight's. But I appreciate your comments. They're very well taken, and I, and I agree with you. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand or come forward. Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting, and we'll go to Mr. Malloy and get his comments.
Thank you, Chairman James Malloy, Planning and Urban Design. Again, what we have is a Topgolf Entertainment Complex here. Um, this is directly south of the Margaritaville Development. Um, just if you need help orienting yourselves, um, and um, to date, staffs received no support, no opposition. Um, staff is recommending approval with conditions. We do want to address the applicant's, uh, modifications. Um, the lighting conditions four and 22, we wrote them that way to specifically address the out, like, the outfield, you know, the fact that, of course, they need to light the outfield. That's why we, you know, provided the recommendation of the lights similar to what they're doing over at the, uh, Home Field Baseball Facility where it still lights your outfield. But again, it's not casting light out onto neighboring properties, not casting light out from its own property. Um, so we feel like we've addressed that. We don't feel any, we don't believe a change is needed there because again, we wrote it that way to specifically address the need for outfield lighting.
Can we, can we ask questions in between so we don't get too off track?
Sure.
So in, in terms of the fact that you've dealt with it, dealt with it in what manner? And, and have, have you dealt with it with the applicant? In terms of talking about how their, the rangefinders or the cameras find the balls and, and this and that.
Um, those issues that weren't brought up in the developers' comments on that, um, uh, again, I, I think the way the condition is written, you know, addresses that, at least from our perspective, to where they can still have the outfield lighting they need for their equipment to work. But also, you know, prevents any, you know, lighting on the front of the building or elsewhere from really casting out.
Okay, go ahead. Um, we're gonna keep going with you and then.
Okay.
I might go back.
Can I interrupt?
Go ahead.
Um, Commissioner Ward. I gotta ask, man. I mean, they're the experts of what they're doing. How are you guys gonna give them recommendations on what kind of lighting to use? That doesn't make sense to me at all.
Um, I mean, they're the experts of what they do with their, you know, entertainment complex. Uh, we also know what, what we've seen on similar projects. Um, and, you know, what the expectation is for, you know, applicants coming into this community, you know, what we expect to see, you know, in this community.
So the lighting issue, is, is that just the apartment complex? Because otherwise, there's no residential around there.
It would be the apartment complex primarily. Um, I, I mean, I would also take the hotel into consideration with that. I mean,
I'm, yeah, that hotel is pretty lit up. It's a Margaritaville, but.
Yeah. But primarily, this addresses the apartment. Some of the houses on 94th, that'd be a little further off, and then the hotel to a certain extent.
Okay, keep, keep going, and then we'll go back. We, we may have to go back to these gentlemen, but go, keep going with the, uh, the EPHIS and the, uh, screen, screening.
Yep. So, um, the screening, um, pertains to mechanical equipment, trash cans, things like that. This, the screening's not related to anything in the outfield. Um, we settled on, you know, landscaping and increased landscaping particular, particularly on the side of the apartments to try to provide a little extra buffer. But the screening is specifically, or is specific to, you know, trash enclosures, mechanical equipment, items like that.
Okay. And it includes the parapet, all that stuff that would normally is required. Okay.
And then finally, the materiality, again, our commercial design guidelines, you know, has a mandate of no more than 15% of the facade being EPHIS. The original proposal, 15, 1.5. The original proposal was an average of about 60, 60 or so. Um, revisions to that have brought it down to about 50%, which is still three times the amount we would, you know, allow in the commercial design guidelines. On the flip side, you know, masonry is required to be 50% of the facade and the entire ground floor. It's about 20, 30% on average. I think, I think we have some slides that kind of break those numbers down here. Kind of the before and after. Yeah, so there are the numbers right there. Um, again, we just want, we just want to see, you know, see those numbers brought closer to what, you know, what the code would be. I think we would be supportive of deviations if these numbers were closer to what the code was, you know, versus the overage we're seeing currently.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, I'm gonna go back to you gentlemen on lighting, just for more clarification. Normally, we don't do this back and forth, but we're going to on this one, so we get the right.
Sure. Yes, so our lighting is very unique to Topgolf operation and the gameplay associated with the camera technology. We do not have lights like Home Field. They are not stadium lights, sports lights in that regard. We cannot operate without the type of lights that we're proposing here. Uh, I know that a photometric plan has been submitted, a light fixture spec has been submitted. Certainly, you've seen the photo of what the venue looks like at night with the outfield lighting. But just given the operation that's unique to Topgolf, um, our lights are just very different. So we'd ask for a deviation to be something very standard. I will share with you this, that in both Wichita and in Overland Park, we do have apartments that are within in close proximity of the venue. We do have the ability to calibrate those lights, to dim those lights, so we're not gonna be a distraction or a nuisance to our neighbors. Uh, again, this is a long-term, um, operation that we're proposing here. Um, but we would not be able to function, um, you know, without these specific type of lights that we're proposing.
And Overland Park, you were built after all the apartments and the office buildings that are around you, correct?
Yes, and.
For the most part.
Similar with Wichita, excuse me, similar with Wichita, where we have apartment complex at the end of the outfield. And we've just worked to calibrate those lights.
Do those lights project out or do they project down?
They are kind of diagonal. They're not 90 degrees. And these lights we're talking about are only, uh, the building mounted lights associated with the outfield. All the parking lot lights are, uh, you know, compliant with code per staff requirements, um, but just the outfield lights are not. So yes, they are at an angle. Uh, they're between generally 80 and 90 degrees. Um, and they shine in a diagonal direction, uh, similar if we may pull up that photo that we had previously. That's the best illustration. So all the light for the outfield is essentially installed um, within the canopy of the building shining outward. So you can see how that light just kind of dies out of, uh, a little bit more than halfway, uh, into the outfield. Uh, again, photometrics, all of those light levels die out at the property boundary. Um, I can show you renderings and provide, uh, different technical documents. But this is really the proof in the pudding here of what it actually looks like at night with what we're proposing here.
Let me add something.
Sure.
I wanted to add two comments. Again, number one, foot candles, the property liner client. Number two, the apartments that are to the east of here, there is a covenant that runs with the land, and I believe this was in the middle back to staff. Um, we sold the land to the apartments. It was in the covenants that run with the land that they're adjacent to an outdoor sports and recreation center. We could not anticipate Topgolf, but we anticipated youth sports with lights, youth sports with noise, recreation, everything we're supposed to do in a Starbond District pursuant to our development agreement. We anticipate it. So that is a covenant that runs with the land with the apartments. And so I, I think you've heard Topgolf. If, if they can't do their custom lights to make this a success, they can't be here. And so again, if this was shiny lights on the apartments, we'd have issue with Home Field. And it was a reference to the, the Margaritaville Resort. We own the resort. We're, we're tickled to death Topgolf is there. So I just wanted to add those comments. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Any questions on the lighting, gentlemen? Anyone online have questions about the lighting? Okay. Any other questions for commi-, uh, sorry, for, uh, Mr. Toy, Commissioner Jones?
Well, this is really for, uh, uh, Mr. Toy and the petitioner. I have to ask this. Is there a reason that the lighting situation wasn't worked out before this meeting in terms of staff and the petitioner being on one accord?
Sorry about that. Um, I mean, considering they weren't brought up in the responses, we figured our language, you know, wasn't an issue with the applicant. Um, again, we tried to write it in a way where, you know, it is a little open-ended. It does have those allowances, you know, for what they're trying to do, but also, you know, saying we want the style, style of lighting that has been seen on similar projects where it's not gonna cast out onto nearby properties, which they've met, I mean, they've met that with their, with what they've submitted. So, um, I mean, we didn't see it as an issue. It wasn't seen as an issue by the point of contact, so, um, it just, it really wasn't a point of contention. The big point of contention was the materiality.
Okay.
Well, just to distinguish here.
I, I need everybody to say their names again when they're talking because we have to transcribe these notes, so we don't know who's talking.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. Todd Walde with Topgolf.
That's right.
And just to go back on the lighting issue, we can't really provide something that's similar to a use that is not like ours at all. It's very unique. The presence of outdoor lighting, sports lighting is prevalent in this area. You've got it on both sides of the interstate, certainly all around us. Just further to the east with Home Field. Uh, I will say that this will certainly not be as impactful or as noticeable as some of what exists out there now with the, the sport lighting, but it is a completely different type of fixture, cannot be similar to what's installed today.
I think the only reason we're asking for clarification is we hate these changes up here because we're trying to balance things out from a staff reports that's been looked at for several months. And so we're scribbling notes and, and trying to come up with solutions and to try to work things out. So it's, it's more difficult for us to try to put this to, and to try to redesign your, your project.
Yes, sir.
Okay. EFS, go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
I keep hearing you say similar projects. I don't think there's a project in one kind that looks like this, does this. Is there?
Um, there's not a project that looks or even functions like this, but again, the intent was, you know, not the same type of lighting, but similar in the fact that it doesn't cast off of the property, which again, the applicant has met that, which we, we believed and considering from, considering discussions prior, we believe the language, you know, was fine, that there wasn't an issue with it because again, we tried to leave it open-ended, you know, because again, we know it's not similar lighting. But the intent of, you know, previous projects was keep it on your property, which they've met that intent with what they've provided. Hence, you know, again, we didn't find a big issue with it because we tried to leave that open-ended for them.
Okay, let's go to, uh, the EFS requirement. Is that, is, is there some, is there some work there that we can get done to get this built the way you want it done with, that it gets closer to the code that we have?
Yeah, yes.
I think we can get past some of this other stuff, but we can get right.
We, well, we made some accommodations and certainly if we can, I, I know we're looking at the statistics here, but maybe we can go back to the actual photo of what the building looks like, cause sometimes, uh, if you throw out some of these building materials have a negative connotation, but our team's been doing this across the country on 90 venues for 15 years, and this is a high level finish with what's being proposed with, uh, all of the glazing that's part of it. You know, if we didn't have glazing, we could do more brick, but I don't think that'd be a very appealing looking building. So we've tried to mix these different materials to give it some visual interest and contrast. And what's different between what's being proposed uh, on this particular project, what you see here is that we've added brick on the lower level all around the building. Uh, so that is a step forward on our end to, um, get closer to what the code requires. Uh, it would be, um, unfortunately, from our brand perspective, uh, and also from a cost perspective, you know, really not really feasible to add, uh, that level of finish across the entire building. And keep in mind, we have essentially a functioning three-sided building with one side being open with glass curtain wall. So we've got just a ton of glass glazing throughout the building, which again, gives it tons of visual appeal where people can see inside and outside and lots of natural light. So there's a lot of advantages to that. If we didn't have that glazing, we probably could get very close to the brick requirement, but I think there's a trade-off there of having the mixture of materials.
Okay, just one quick question about our ugly stepsister to the south. How does this compare to that facility in terms of masonry and that kind of thing?
Well, that has a lot of block masonry, concrete block masonry. It's a more of a massive building than what we're proposing here, but this has more different types of materials and colors to give it more visual interest, so.
More contrast.
It has a lot more contrast. These are earth tone, earth tone colors down at Overland Park, and this is something that is more modern looking and uh, again, just more interest based on the number of different types of, uh, materials on the exterior and colors as well as you can.
In your opinion, which is better looking, this building or the Overland Park?
This one will be better looking. Again, more visually appealing.
Don't screw it up. You've already answered the question pretty well. If you keep going, you could step in it. And you have to say that. You're here before us tonight.
That's right.
Okay. All right, I'm done. Any other questions online or in the, or excuse me, at the commission here in the chambers?
Uh, just one clarifying item. Do we have any more concerns about item conditions 21 and 22?
With regarding the screening?
Yes, sir. That was on the T-line side. Maybe if we can go to another photo here to show, again, we have a three-sided building. One side is the T-line that faces the outfield. To have a parapet there would prevent the successful use of our TopTracer gameplay technology. We're happy to do parapets elsewhere, but on that, that east side of the building where the T-line is, uh, this is actually the opposite side of what we're seeing here. Go to maybe, uh, yeah, so on that side of the building, essentially having a parapet there would prohibit the effective functioning of that, of that technology. Everything else, the parapets on the, on the west, north and south side, happy to do that, just difficult to do it here.
Okay.
With a parapet, you could do some other type of screen.
All right. All right, but as far as the trash enclosures, the other stuff, you're good with all.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions, any further questions or clarifications needed? If not, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones.
Okay, so I just want to know that, um, with the discussion back and forth, cause I'm like you. I mean, I, I wish this had have been worked out earlier on the lighting. I just want confirmation that staff, uh, I, I know the petitioner is the expert in one regard, but I still want to hear from staff that you're good with the lighting in particular. Think they wanted modifications on, was it four and 22?
I mean, if, if there's a modification they want to make, I mean, we can hold it over and, you know, work on specific language, but, um, I think as written and as written with what they presented, I mean, they've, they've, they meet the condition with what they present. We're just, again, reinforcing that we don't want anything casting off the property line and that any fixtures on the front of the building, not the back, but the front, need to be that 90 uh, degree cutoff. So, I mean, we're fine with what was presented. Um, I was under the impression we were fine with the language as written.
And so you're saying you're good with the modification, the requested modification?
If, I mean, I guess the question is what is the modification to be made? Cause I, you know, I heard that there, I've seen that they want a modification, but I've not seen specific language or specific recommendation.
I agree. Let's get clarification on that, please.
Cool.
Yeah, Kevin Noack with Arco Construction. So the, the modification we look for on number four is which does not, which does not cast any light vertically or horizontally towards the residences to the east or southeast. I think we would need to strike that altogether, just because literally they do down, I mean, they still do cast out and down towards the east-southeast. I think that's just a little bit too specific. We're happy to add more prohibited language that we're gonna be zero foot, well, we have zero foot candles at the property line. So I think we need to remove that. And then on number 12, direct light 90 degrees downward. We just can't direct it straight downward, otherwise there's no light to the outfield.
We're, Byron's planning department, we're specifying on the west side of the building for that. I know we didn't say that explicitly, but it's related to the west side of the building.
Okay, if we added that language, that'd be fine too. Any parking lot language, yep.
Yeah, just a quick recommendation, maybe it's just
Your name again?
Todd Walde with Topgolf. Maybe it's best, I mean, it's a lot of language here, just in accordance with the submitted photometric plan. I believe there's a light fixture spec that's part of that. Is that correct? Uh, just to make it in accordance with the submitted lighting plan slash photometric plan.
Any further clarifications needed, Commissioner Jones? Sorry, you're muted.
Four and 12. And then was it 22?
Four, 12 and 22 are the conditions we're looking at?
Yes, that's what I had heard earlier.
Yes.
Four and 12 on lighting, okay. So.
I'm tracking about as good as my golf game and that is not good, but.
So my, my, my bottom line question now for staff is that if, I mean, if, if we're looking at approving it, cause we, my thought is we don't want to necessarily hold this over. But, uh, is staff good with if, you know, we say something in a motion about the petitioner and staff continuing to work together on those issues? Or is staff thinking we need to hold over because you have a level of justified discomfort?
If, if what I'm hearing is correct, the applicant wishes to strike condition four entirely, modify condition 12 to reflect that condition only applying to the west side of the building. And on condition 22, is that the screening?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we can clarify that this only applies to the mechanical loading docks, trash enclosures and not around, not around the
East side.
Self.
Okay, we have it.
I'm good. I got that.
All right, thank you. Any further clarifications needed? I'll stand for the motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I'm gonna stab, I'm gonna take a stab at this.
All right, get your knife out.
I want to make a motion to approve. Uh, we're doing, are we doing the change of zone first?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, change of zone 2024 dash 024. Specifically looking at, um, deviations for number one, B, C, and D. The, uh, the applicant's asked for deviations from all three of those things, and I think with the uniqueness of the building, the way it looks, this isn't a cookie cutter type building like the rest of the ledge's looks per se. I think we need to go ahead and grant those deviations so that they can go ahead and have their unique look. Um, on condition number four, we will scratch and take out which does not cast any light vertically or horizontally towards the residences to the east and southeast. On condition 12, the, the line there of direct light 90 degrees downward needs to be removed. And it needs to pertain to the west side of the building in accordance with the, uh, proposed lighting plan that they have submitted. And then is 21 that deals with the parapets?
The architectural screening for the trash enclosures and the
21, 20, so I'm 22. Okay, so that, so I think the, uh, we need to add in there about the east side, T-line, there'll be no parapet. That was, I wrote that down correctly. And then the architectural screens would apply to the, um, to the rest of the facility with the mechanical, uh, and the trash enclosures. Did I cover everything?
Did we hit that one straight?
It sounded, sounded good to me.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make sure we got everything covered.
You're on the green, Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, that is.
We will leave it to Janet to make sense of it. Janet, you've got it?
Um, I got most of it and by the time I listen to the tape, I think I'll be able to figure it out. I just got lost.
She in the sand trap, but I think we'll get her out.
Well, I got lost on 21 and 22, so. But I have the rest. Do we have a second to this motion?
Yes, we have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ernst?
A hearty eye.
Jones?
Ditto, eye.
Miller?
Eye.
Mohler?
Eye.
Schwartz?
Eye.
Ward?
Eye.
Armstrong?
Eye.
Beth?
Eye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone passes eight in favor and none opposed with deviations, one, B, C, and D being approved. Striking in number four, uh, the end of the sentence which begins, which does not cast any light. And let's see, um, revision to number 12, striking to direct light 90 degrees downward. And the revisions to conditions 21 and 22.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Now I'll need one on the plat, plat 2024 dash 022.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Do I need to restate everything again for the plat?
No.
As much as I'd love you to, no.
Um, I make a motion to approve plat 2024 dash 022.
Thank you. Motion for approval of plat 2024 dash 022 made by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
That is subject to the revised conditions.
Correct. Uh, roll call, please.
Ernst?
Eye.
Jones?
Eye.
Miller?
Eye.
Mohler?
Eye.
Schwartz?
Eye.
Ward?
Eye.
Armstrong?
Eye.
Beth?
Eye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve plat 22, subject to the revised conditions passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Change of zone application will be heard again on August 29th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2024 dash 005, Saul Jimenez. Special use permit to operate an automotive repair business at 1101 Minnesota Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August 12, 2024, the application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case, it contained in the official file, the notice in the wind out echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Jimenez, are you in the audience or online? Saul Jimenez. Okay, whose case is this? Uh, Mr. Toy, do you want to present?
I can present if need be.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman, Byron's planning department. So the applicant wants to have, or let's take a step back, in between 1995 and 2017, this operated as a bottom of repair shop. New license came in 2018 till 2020, operating again as a repair shop. Operating in 2020, 2024, there's been a lapse in that business license and therefore that resulted in this S U P that you see before you. So it's really ultimately a continuation of what's been going on the property, it's the fact that they didn't get the necessary license for the last four years. And so we're seeing this S U P. Um, they've been receptive and responsive to our comments. Um, we actually just talked, I talked with the one this morning, Maria, to be here at the meeting, so I'm kind of surprised she's not here, so I gave her the meeting link. But, uh, staff recommends approval, subject to stipulations in the report.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Toy? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the audience. Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. If you're online, raise your hand. Seeing no one, we've already heard staff comment. Any questions or clarifications needed? If not, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit 2024 dash 005, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion made for approval of special use application 2024 dash 005 by Commissioner Ward. The second by Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2024 dash 005 for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This, uh, will be heard once again on August 29th at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2024 dash 027, Caitlin Wolf with Bartlett and West. Special use permit for the processing and recycling of concrete, brick and other rock materials at 6601 Inland Drive. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August 12th, 2024. The application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to state that the Unified Government Board of Commissioners referred this petition back to the City Planning Commission at their June 27th, 2024 meeting for the applicant and/or property owner to provide additional clarification regarding the Board of Public Utilities accessing the property for their truck vehicles. And also the Planning Commission previously recommended of approval of this application with conditions. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
I believe Mr. Ernst, Commissioner Ernst has something.
Yes, sir. I heard from a number of members of the community.